No additions or corrections, Chair.
And that is for closed session. So at this time, we're looking at closed session items A through C, and we invite the public to comment on those items now. We ask those joining us via Zoom to use the raise hand function or star nine via landline to be recognized. Give it one more second. Seeing no hands going up via Zoom, we will close public comment on our closed session items, and the board will recess for closed session. We'll reconvene here in chambers at 10:30 a.m. Thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and reconvene this meeting of the Board of Supervisors after our closed session. Let the record reflect that all members of the Board are present except for Supervisor Luis Alejo, who will be absent today. At this point, I'm going to turn to Diego Celis, who's on Zoom, to make the announcement at the interpreter, Diego.
Muy buenos días. Mi nombre es Diego Celis y seré su intérprete en español para la reunión de hoy. Si usted está planeando hacer un comentario público y necesita servicio de intérprete, favor de hablar lenta y suficientemente fuerte para que yo lo escuche. Favor de hacer una pausa al final de sus oraciones para asegurarse de que tengo la oportunidad de interpretarle. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, Diego. And with that, we're going to do the pledge. Would you all rise and join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm holding on to that "all."
With that, we're going to turn and see if there's any additions or corrections.
Yes, there is one correction to item number 12 under scheduled matters. There is an erroneous board order on there, which will be removed.
All right. So we've got that removed. And with that, we're going to proceed to ceremonial resolutions. Is there a member of this Board who wishes to remove an item from our resolutions for comment? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the public. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll bring it back for action. Have a motion for ask you. Is there a second from church? I'll take the second from church. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, the motion carries. And with that, we're going to present some resolutions. Diana Jimenez would come up and join me in the front. So we're here today recognizing May as Older Americans Month in Monterey County. We're flipping the script on aging. We've heard all kinds of incredible themes that point to what we're all doing, right? There's very few things that we all do. Aging is one of them. I remember that one. That one always stuck with me. So with that, this recognition of the entire month, I want to turn it over to get a presentation about why we're doing it this month and maybe some exciting things that are currently happening within the community that put a spotlight on our older Americans here in Monterey County.
Thank you Supervisor Lopez and members of the Board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm also joined here today with Amy Cuda. She's the Chair of my Advisory Council as well as Jessica. She's the Vice Chair of our Advisory Council. So on behalf of the Department of Social Services and Area Agency on Aging as well as the Advisory Council, I want to thank you for recognizing the importance of Older Americans Month and the alignment with the resolution. And I would like to read some remarks as well. The Older Americans Act is the foundation of our nation's commitment to supporting older adults, individuals with disabilities, as well as family caregivers. It funds essential in-home and community-based services that help seniors remain healthy, safe, and independent. And these services include congregate and home-delivered meals. And that's very important to help fight hunger and isolation for many of our seniors. It's the only hot meal that they actually eat all day. And family caregiver services, information referrals, and assistance to community resources. We have transportation assistance, legal support. We have Medicare counseling and ombudsman services, to name a few. Now locally, the Area Agency on Aging is responsible for administering these programs along with a strong network of partners. And those included today are Alliance on Aging. We have Alzheimer's Association. Yay, there you go. We have a large contingency, as you can see today. Alzheimer's Association, Health Project Centers, Legal Services for Seniors, Loaves, Fishes &amp; Computers, Meals on Wheels of the Monterey Peninsula and the Salinas Valley. We have North County Recreation and Park District, and we have Chispa, to name a few. Now also, but today I have to raise a number of concerns because it's very timely. The federal infrastructure that supports our Older Americans Act funding is facing significant change and challenges. Recently, the Administration for Community Living, which oversees our Older Americans Act funding, was dismantled. Now, the programs are now proposed to be split amongst various other federal agencies. And we're also concerned about the possible elimination of some programs. In particular, its ombudsman and also health insurance counseling. So this restructuring and potential eliminations of these programs create uncertainty at a time when the needs of our older adults are increasing. So with our population aging rapidly, it's essential that we preserve and strengthen these services and not fragment or eliminate the funding and the services. So we urge both our community members and our elected officials to stay informed about these challenges and to advocate and protect our programs, the Older Americans Act programs, and also our local network that support these programs. Now despite these challenges, there is also reason to celebrate. And at this time, I'd like to call up Teresa Sullivan to share some good news. news that is also written and recognized in our resolution.
Thank you, Marlene. And this is really good news. And I'm going to turn this over immediately to Rafi Nazarianz from AARP. He is their advocacy director, and he will share the good news with you.
Thank you so much, Teresa. Can you hold that for me, please? Thank you for having me here today. I'm Rafi Nazarianz, Advocacy Director for AARP California, Chair Lopez, Members of the Board. It gives me great pleasure to be here to welcome Monterey County to AARP's Network of Age-Friendly States and Communities. Monterey County is officially the 92nd community in California to enroll in the network. And as you all know, California's population is rapidly aging, and this trend is evident here in Monterey County as well. Approximately 15.5% of the population is age 65 or older. And by 2030, it's projected that 12.54 of the population will be age 65 to 84, and nearly 3% will be 85 years of age and older. By joining AARP's network, Monterey County is taking a significant step towards preparing for the demographic shift and enhancing community livability for people of all ages and abilities. So this initiative is not just about addressing the needs of older adults. It's about creating a community where everyone can thrive regardless of age. As a member of the network, Monterey County has embarked on a planning process across several domains of livability, including outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, housing, and many other important ones. And to support these efforts, Monterey County will have access to a wealth of resources, including national and global research, planning models, best practices from around the world, and support from AARP and other aging experts. AARP applauds your efforts to make the community a great place to live for people of all ages, and we really look forward to collaborating with Monterey County as this program continues. So, welcome to the network. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Rafi. It really is an honor to be a member of this network and really part of this national and statewide movement. But, of course, I have to acknowledge all of those people that are responsible for us being here today and getting this recognition and this membership. There are countless numbers of people that are part of this. Many of our older American providers are here today, and we have lots of volunteers and staff, other folks, and many, many community members that we have to thank. Many of you have been involved in our LADAP, Local Aging and Disabilities Action Plan project, in the last year and a half. We spent a lot of time working on talking about creating, fostering, age-friendly communities. Excuse me. And you've all been wonderful and enthusiastic and just incredible contributors to that project. So, we're going to be coming back next month, Board members, to present the actual plan to you. But anyway, I want to again thank Rafi and thank you all. Thank you for all of you who have agreed to continue to support this effort. You know, hopefully, we will all have the resources to be able to do that. So, on the final note, I would like to ask everybody to stand up that's come out from all parts of the county to be here to support this today.
So I actually want to do something different. Normally, we take a photo from the crowd this way. I'm going to have us turn around and face that way, and I'm going to ask Nick to take the photo because this turnout is so incredible. So if you would all turn for me and face Nick, let's get the rest of the Board down here with us. Sonia, you too. You don't get to hide. Incredible turnout. Thank you all for being here. I see so many friends in the crowd.
So, the front row is going to have to scooch in a little bit. We're going to have to rearrange a little bit. I need some people over here. Sonia, yes. Sonia, Glenn, can you get... Glenn, can you get behind Rodrick because you're tall? Well, all right. Let's see. Supervisor Lopez, I need you to scooch in. All right. Here we go, everybody. The hardest picture of my life. Okay, got it.
Great job.
I forgot to mention that we will be actually presenting this plan. We've been working so hard on at the next, at the June 6 Supervisor Meeting, and then at all of the City Council that are involved in the project.
Thank you, Teresa. One more round of applause. All right, I'm going to see if I can get Dr. Harris up here with Nancy Buescher. All right. I go by my notes. I go by my notes. All right. I'll give you one. Nancy got one, so, all right. So these incredible people are up here today to help me recognize 700 highly-skilled nurses at Natividat and at the County Health Department during Nurses Week 2025. We all know how dependent we are on our nurses and all the incredible men and women who show up every single day to keep us healthy. They are heroes. We all remember that during the pandemic, we couldn't find enough of them. They continually showed up for us in our community. But every single year, every single month should be Nurses Week, Nurses Month, Nurses Day, right? And for that reason, we are recognizing this week as Nurses Week. And for that reason, I want to turn this over to Dr. Harris and Elsa from the Health Department in Natividat to share a few words with us.
Thank you Supervisor Lopez. You know, it really is a special week, and I can completely concur with Supervisor Lopez. Every day is really, is about nurses. We have approximately 700 within our, and within our two departments. You know, this week's theme for Nurses Week is the power of nurses. It really is truly about the effect and the influence that our nurses have on our community and for patients. You know, one thing I like to share every year is something called the Daisy Award at Natividat. And it's something really special. It's a family created this award nationally in a program. And really, what it's all about is how this family was overwhelmed by the care, the kindness that nursing provides, are provided to them as a family. We participate in this program, and I'm fortunate enough, it's one of my very favorite things to do with Nancy Buescher, our CNO, to provide this award for the Daisy Award. And I bring it just so, because it so encapsulates. Every single time without fail, the nurse says, "I'm just doing my job." It's actually a line, and it is nationally, but every single time, they're surprised. They really do, they shake their head. And I just want to thank each and every one of them that wins this award and what they do every day, whether it's a nurse in ICU, or an emergency department, or a public health nurse, or case management, or quality, or infection control. They really do make a difference. And the power of nursing, whether it's for the individual, for our departments, for our communities, for our families, they're all just incredibly amazing people. And I am truly appreciative of each and every one of them.
So thank you for this, and I'll just add a few words. So I'm Elsa Jimenez, and I'm the Director of the Health Department. Not only do our nurses play critical roles in helping our patients in our primary care settings, in our behavioral health clinics, but they also play a critical role in communicable disease investigations, and making sure that people receive the treatment that they need, and doing home visits. I think that's one key element that really helps our vulnerable residents, whether it's a new mom, a first-time mom, having a nurse in their home for two years following them to help assure that the mother is able to obtain her education and other goals, but also making sure that that child is starting right from the beginning. As well as having them support our residents who are on the other end, suffering from chronic conditions, mental illness, homelessness, and trying to make sure that they get connected to services. So nurses, whether they're public health nurses, RNs, nurse practitioners, LVNs, I'll even add medical assistance in there because that's a pathway that gets them into nursing, are really core to the fabric of health department services in all of our settings. So thank you to Ella, who serves as our Director of Nursing and oversees all of our public health nurse functions.
Hi, I just want to say a special thank you to all the nurses. Nursing is the largest profession of the healthcare professions, over 5 million in the United States. So that is the power of nursing, the amount of caring, the amount of compassion that they give to communities. And we see that here with our nursing staff. And I'm grateful for the opportunity to recognize them. When you think about it, as Elsa said, nurses are with you from your first breath to your last. And it's through so many different settings. So we really want to honor them all and what they do for this community particularly. So, thank you, and thanks to all the nurses.
Thank you. I don't know how much more I could add to all of the wonderful words. But I do want to just recognize the public health nurses and other nurses that are in the audience now. So if you guys want to stand up, and just a huge round of applause for all of the work that you guys do. Thank you. They're shy. Right, exactly.
All right, then if you're not going to join us, we'll get a, we'll take a photo up here without you, but know that this is for you. Thank you. So next up, I want to bring up Chris Johnson. Is Chris with us? Did he make it? Perfect. Come on up, Chris. I see you. So we have a team here today accepting an award on behalf of a county employee with 50 years of service. Fifty years. Catherine Rossi provided outstanding service in the role of Maintenance Yard Clerk in the Public Works Facility and Public Works Department, District 4 in the San Ardo Yard with Crew 304. She has always been mindful of the interests of the County of Monterey's Public Works Division and has worked tirelessly to meet goals and objectives. Her unwavering commitment and dedication to the County of Monterey's Public Works Division has significantly contributed to its growth and accomplishments. This county rarely sees somebody meet 50 years. I can think of only one other in my time here. So we wanted to stop today and, in her honor, recognize 50 years, five decades of commitment. And for this, I want to turn to our Director, Ishi, to see if you've got a few words to share.
Thank you very much Chair Lopez, CEO, and members of the Board for this recognition for Ms. Rossi, who could not be with us today. Staff will reserve more of the time for allowing for words for Road Superintendent Chris Johnson and Assistant Road Superintendent Trent Stevens to say some words for Kathy. But in brief, Kathy has been an invaluable aide for our Road District 4 San Ardo Yard, as well as Public Works as a whole. The San Ardo Yard serves all the way southeast in Monterey County, past the community of San Miguel, all the way to and including the community of Parkfield. It goes north from there, just south of the community of San Lucas, and abuts against the Fresno County border. And then from there expands all the way west to the Pacific Ocean, which includes the community of Lockwood, the bottom part of 400 Liggett, the garrison, and the all of Nussman to Ferguson Road. And these are the two leaders who lead that yard, and she supports them. And Kathy has worked tirelessly over her, over 50 years, that's five zero years of service, dutifully working for Monterey County, and now, and has been our Maintenance Yard Clerk at San Ardo for a very long time. She makes sure that the road maintenance workers and Chris's crew have everything they need, and she works with us and management to make sure that their yard have what they need in order to do the job they need to, to keep our roads safe down there. They've seen a lot of things such as landslides onto Nussman to Ferguson Road, slides on Poncho Rico and other places that haven't slid before. She's seen a lot of change, a lot of disasters, and has weathered through all of it. And we cannot thank Kathy enough for all of her hard years of service for the county. And with that, I'll hand the microphone over to Chris.
Thank you. Thank you. She's definitely the most dedicated person to work I've ever met. And this is what an honor to accept this for her. And hopefully, she sticks around for a few more years to keep things going. Other than that, you want anything? Otherwise, thank you. Thanks for your time.
And so I was negligent in mentioning that this is overall part of a recognition of Public Service Recognition Week, which is May 4 through 10. But we wanted to call out one of the best. And so in doing that, I want to go ahead and hand you this one. And what I'll do is turn to Director Ishi and hand you the other. And we'll take a quick photo. All right, next up, we've got quite a few here for mental health awareness. I'm going to invite Supervisor, ask you to join me for this. And I, so... So if the folks from NAMI would come up and join us? All right.
These aren't? Yep, okay. Cool. So we're going to kick us off as celebrating Mental Health Awareness Month. I'm recognizing the National Alliance on Mental Illness, and I'm going to pass this to you. Thank you, Joe, for joining us. And May recognizes Mental Health Awareness Month, which is one of the times of the year that we recognize awareness and understanding of mental health issues affecting individuals and communities. One of our largest grassroots mental health organizations that helps work with counties and cities and communities to better the lives of millions of Americans affected by mental illness is an organization called the National Alliance on Mental Illness. And right here in Monterey County, we have a phenomenal chapter of NAMI. And Joe is one of our, are you the chapter president, right? Yeah. So been volunteering with the organization for many years.
Too long.
Too, too long. You're ready to retire, too, huh? Anyway, NAMI works tirelessly to educate the public, support individuals living with mental health conditions, and provide critical resources to families who support and have loved ones living with mental health conditions as well. NAMI Monterey County empowers people with knowledge, tools, and hope for recovery and resilience through programs such as Family to Family, Peer to Peer, Ending the Silence, and many other support groups. NAMI Monterey County advocates for increased access to mental health services, supports decriminalization of mental illness, and partners with local agencies, schools, and public service providers to promote early intervention and holistic care. Monterey County has been an absolute critical partner with NAMI, and NAMI has helped Monterey County extend access and resources to so, so many individuals in our community. And we just want to say And we just want to say thank you. And thank you for being our partner to help Monterey County extend resources and knowledge and support and hope to those living in our community with mental illness, and those who love those of us living with mental illness. So thank you, Joe, for the work that you do, and I'll give you the microphone and make a few comments.
Okay, thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Supervisor. Here we go. I'd like to first take this opportunity to thank the Board of Supervisors for its ongoing commitment and support for NAMI Monterey County. And also, we really appreciate their commitment to crisis intervention training, which, and the stepping up initiative, both of which has benefited this county in countless ways, quiet ways, and saved lives, and benefited people with mental illness, and we really thank you for that. My name is Joe Liverneis, and I'm President of the local affiliate, and I'm joined here today with our committed and amazing, some of our amazing staff and volunteers. Thank you for showing up today. Mental Health Awareness Month is an opportunity for the general public to change the narrative around mental illness. As an organization, NAMI promotes open communication about wellness every day of the year, but this month is an opportunity to foster resilience and hope, connection and understanding, community, and empowerment. During Mental Health Awareness Month, NAMI Monterey County encourages the public to acknowledge the diverse experiences that shape our mental health journeys. We encourage open dialogues in safe environments. We encourage our partners to foster platforms for advocates, ambassadors, and individuals to share their mental health journeys. In every story, there is strength, and we are all in this together. NAMI Monterey County offers free, evidence-based support and education groups designed for peers and for families, for significant others, and friends of people with mental health conditions. These programs are led by teams of compassionate volunteers with lived experiences, and they are also available in English and in Spanish. To learn more about NAMI, here's the pitch. Visit us at nami.org, or, I'm sorry, namimonterey.org, or contact us at 831-422-624-6264. And thanks again for this, for recognizing us and with this sweet proclamation, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Oh, we got it.
Yeah. All the microphones.
Hi, my name is Dee, and I just want to say thank you for everybody being here, mental health and NAMI, because I kind of stumbled onto NAMI, but you know what? I love it, because I go in that, I went in there. I come from Salinas, I do, I mean, with behavioral health and all the programs that have been in Salinas, I benefit from. So I'm one of the examples of what these programs do, because I come from the streets, I've been in prison, I've been out 35 years, I've been clean and sober 35 years, I come from an abusive family. And so I didn't know that I had mental health. But today, I understand that, you know, I have the tools to be better. And so when giving back is what I do, I get pamphlets, I learn about the program, I learn about behavioral health, a lot of programs out here, and I go and I try to promote it, because I really believe that our community is powerful when we, when we connect, because that's how I got here. And now they also have a program where you can go and give your story. We're going into with law enforcement, and we're sharing our stories with them. And I love that, because you know what? It's about community and coming together and talking about our stories. You may know somebody, you may deal with it yourself, you may have a friend or in your family. They're asking people to come forward, and you join them, so that way we could share, because this is how we educate each other. I learn from all of you. I learn from my buddy here, because I went to his, some of his programs, and I love it. And that's how I learn. I come from the streets, I walk indoors, it allow me, and that's what I do, because I want to share the good in our community, because we do have a great community. And Glenn Church, he came when I was feeding some chickens and told me about his, you know, supervise, that's how I met him. So you know what? Like I said, you know, I've had, I'm 70 years old, and you know what? I come from Alisal, Carr Street, and so you know what? I mean, it's been a journey, but I want to take time to thank the community, thank the board members, and just, and my buddy here, and just say, you know what? I can't, I love, I'm, I'm a homegrown gal from Alisal, so that's who I am. So I just want to say, NAMI, you walk in, and you, these ladies here, they, they make you feel human. They make me feel human. And that's, that was big for me. So thank you.
All right. Let's get a quick photo.
Yeah, perfect.
I think it's Fabrizio and Melanie. I don't know, I had Fabrizio on my chart, but I don't see him in the room, so. All right, bring the team, come on up.
And while we bring the team up, I just want to announce, since we're talking about mental health and mental health resources, I was challenged by some of my son's friends at school, Monterey Bay Charter School, Middle School, Jackson, and Learning for Life High School, Rita, to participate in the Speak Your Mind Ice Bucket Challenge to raise awareness for mental health and suicide prevention, about sharing your stories, which is what we're talking about. So at about 12:15, right after we end our meeting here, we're going to step outside, and my colleagues are going to help me participate in that challenge. So we'll share a little bit about why mental health matters to us personally, and we've got some ice in the back and some buckets, so anyone who wants to join us. But I just want to thank, thank the students who are engaging us and participating. It means a lot for them to hear that these are issues that we're talking about, and that they do affect us personally as well. So I want to thank my colleagues for just caring as much about these things that we know affect everyone in our community, so.
Wendy's an overachiever. You're supposed to challenge people after you get the water dumped on you.
No, we're doing it together.
But instead, she said, no, come with. So we're all going to be doing that together. And I just want to acknowledge that there's no silver bullet. When we talk about the challenges our community face, it takes all of us, in our different skills, life experience, to bring forward answers. And I want to thank the folks we have up here today, our professionals who are part of that connective tissue and glue that help build bridges to resources for our community. We're all in this challenging world together, and now more than ever, so many of us feel stresses. We feel heavy moments in rooms that we sit in, we know that people have heaviness in their spirit and soul, and we might acknowledge it that way, or we might say they're experiencing a behavioral health challenge. There's different language we can use, but at the end of the day, we belong to each other, and in that, we have to hold each other up. And so these folks you see before you today, as we recognize this month, we want to thank you for your service to our constituents, who are your neighbors, to our collective communities. And with that, I'll turn the microphone over to Melanie.
Thank you very much. So, thank you so much. And on behalf of our entire county behavioral health team, who we have some representatives here today with us, I want to thank the Board of Supervisors for this meaningful resolution and recognition of this very important month, Mental Health Awareness Month. We're honored and grateful for your continued support. This recognition reflects the dedication of our staff and also belongs to our incredible community partners who work alongside us every day. We could not do it without them. As you said, we're all in this together, and together, we are expanding access to care, reducing stigma, and promoting hope and healing throughout our county. And we, behavioral health, remain committed to serving our community with compassion, equity, and collaboration. Thank you for this honor and for reinforcing the importance of mental health for all.
I think we need to move to the right, to center for you, is that right? All right. How are we doing there?
And finally, we have our Maternal Mental Health Awareness Week in Monterey County. So I'm going to invite our doula hub up to come and join us, and I see a bunch of you here with me. I'm going to grab my notes. Thank you. Okay, all right. All right, so who do we have here? I see Levisha Franklin from Queens Council, Sonia Coler from Bright Beginnings, Early Childhood Development Initiative. We've got Stephanie Afaro and Maria Sa Hernandez from the Parenting Connection, Monterey County, Gabby Silva from Mamas de Salles, Salinas, Hope Griffin Ortiz from Monterey County Behavioral Health, Joy Super from the Community Hospital and Montage Health, and I'm sure I'm missing some folks, but thank you all for joining us today. I got a chance to hang out with some of you all at the birth fair that Parenting Connection put on this last weekend, but I'm going to pass these guys out here. Thank you, Chris, for the help. So May 5th through May 11th is Maternal Mental Health Awareness Week in Monterey County. That's what this resolution is for. And, you know, this is one that we've been presenting every week, or every year now for a handful of years, but the amount of progress that we've made has been like exponential, and it's because of the work that you all have been doing, and it makes me just like so proud, and I just say thank you. On behalf of all of the moms and all of the families and all of the, the community here in Monterey County, this, this, this year especially, we're celebrating something particularly unique and special for maternal mental health, and that is the work that's been done to expand the CAL AIM goal to make doulas available to all Medi-Cal birthing families. So big deal, it's a big deal, thank you. So in Monterey County, we estimate that about 20% or 16% of our individuals who give birth experience some form of postpartum depressive, or anxiety, or OCD types of symptoms, which negatively impact the ability of those families to bond with and take care of their newborn infants, and then become, you know, thrive as a family. So many of us have personally experienced those challenges, and it stays with you for the duration of your parenting experience. We know that routine screenings, increased awareness, and culturally sensitive holistic approach, we can work towards preventing maternal mental health disorders, and making sure that families have the resources that they need to get treatment and support, and that you then can go on to thrive. We also know that the momentum in Monterey County to increase awareness, reduce stigma, and expand capacity to train family service agencies and providers on maternal mental health has been extraordinary these past 10 years. It truly is because of the people you see standing here and the organizations they represent. I'm forever indebted to and grateful to, to each of you for that. The Monterey County Maternal Mental Health Task Force, y'all, is part of the countywide Bright Beginnings Early Childhood Development Initiative. You've catalyzed the launch of the regional cross-sector doula hub. The hub emerged to expand access to trained, non-clinical professionals who can provide emotional, physical, and informational support during pregnancy, delivery, and postpartum, so after childhood, or childbirth, for Medi-Cal recipients. And in Monterey County, about 70% of our births are Medi-Cal births, so that's a lot of our childbirth is Medi-Cal. So we're now making doulas a Medi-Cal benefit for all birthing parents. So doula support is linked to a host of improved maternal health outcomes, including improved mental health for those families. As cited in a U.S. Health and Human Service Policy Brief in 2022, community-based doulas can provide culturally appropriate support to women who are already at a higher risk of poor outcomes throughout their pregnancy, delivery, and the postpartum period. We know that doulas are often trusted members of the community they serve, and are well-suited to address issues related to discrimination and other drivers of disparities by bridging language and cultural gaps, and serving as health navigators at a period of time when most of, most of the women giving birth haven't ever done that before. So having someone that knows how to navigate the hospital system, the healthcare system, it's, it's really a critical way to improve health outcomes. Among many Medicaid beneficiaries, so the moms on Medi-Cal, research has shown that women whose labor and delivery were supported by doula care, they have lower C-section rates, they have lower preterm birth rates, they have less birth complications for the mom and for the baby, they have improved rates of breastfeeding initiation, if that's what the mom wants. So doula intervention is a cost-saving measure for our Medicaid health system as well. Win-win for everybody, which is why the state is investing in doulas. So in just six months, with the funding from the Central California Alliance for Health, the Doula Hub has helped to train 43 new doulas, who have in turn already started supporting moms who are giving birth. I want to just give a quick, thank you, yeah. So I want to give a shout out to the Doula Hub birth partners, the Doula Hub partners who are helping to train these doulas, and just say thank you for your dedication. These things don't happen by magic, they happen because people are working really hard, many as volunteers, and you, you are single-handedly, multi-handedly, dozens-of-handedly improving maternal health outcomes here in Monterey County for our, for our moms, and some of our most vulnerable moms, and it, it matters so much. You're, you're changing the trajectory of family outcomes for generations. It's happening right here, and it's happening because of you. So with deepest appreciation, celebration, in celebration of Maternal Mental Health Week, thank you to the Birth Network of Monterey County, thank you to Bright Beginnings, Early Childhood Initiative, thank you to California State University, Monterey Bay, thank you to Central California Alliance for Health, thank you to the Community Hospital of Monterey Peninsula, thank you to Dora Hope, thank you First 5 Monterey County, thank you Queens Council, thank you Mamas de Salinas, thank you Monterey County Behavioral Health, thank you Nativad Foundation, thank you Nativad Hospital, thank you Parenting Connection of Monterey County, thank you Rossi's de Carino, thank you Salinas Valley Health Medical Center, thank you colleagues on the Board of Supervisors, and to anyone who I missed, we thank you as well, and to all of your partners who I know support you in the late nights when you're doing this work, we thank you as well. So with that, I hereby proclaim May 5th through 11th, Maternal Mental Health Awareness Week, and to all the other days of the year, thank you for continuing to support. So with that, we will say thank you and take a picture.
So lastly, before we move forward up here, I'm going to ask our CAO, De La Rosa, to make a few comments regarding the resolution on public service. I know it's such a key part of who we are and what we do here at the county, and so from the DIAS, I wanted to make sure she had an opportunity to share comments.
So I do want to thank everybody that came to the boardroom today and everybody that's listening online. I think a day like today, when we're honoring our public service employees, those that work for us in the county and in the hospital of Nativad, it's, it really is representative. Based on all these resolutions that were provided today, we were talking birth, we were talking nurses, we were talking mental health, but really, the range of lifetime that we covered in today's resolutions. that we covered in today's resolutions. I just want to make sure that we also honor every county employee that works for the county of Monterey. We're involved in every aspect of folks' lives, sometimes when they don't necessarily want to see us and other times where they desperately need somebody to hold their hand as they're going through a court process or other difficult process in their lives. So I just want to make sure that we take a moment to thank everybody that works for the county of Monterey, but also all of our nonprofit organizations that help us do the work to serve the people because we would not be able to do our job as well without your support. So thank you so much to all of you that are county employees, but then all of you that work with us as representatives of your individual organizations, you too are county of Monterey employees through the work that you help us do without, throughout the community. We couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Round of applause. So with that, we've concluded our ceremonial resolutions this morning and we'll proceed with our business, beginning with appointments. We have one appointment this morning, item nine. Is there any comments or questions on item nine this morning? And don't be shy to get up and go. You're not going to hurt our feelings. We know we're, we can be boring. All right, then we'll bring it back. Is there action on item nine? I've got a motion for approval. I did. I've got a second and one more time just for, to satisfy the lawyers, any public comment on item nine? We have one hand raised on item nine.
Maica Velazquez.
Maica.
Actually, I'm sorry. I have my hand raised for public comment.
I'll come back to you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion and a second. I'll ask all those in favor to signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries on nine. At this point, we're going to recess into our successor agency, the Redevelopment Agency of the County of Monterey, calling to order. Let the record reflect that all members of this board are present except Supervisor Alejo. We have a consent agenda today, which is numbered one with sub-items A through C. On that one, is there a member of the public who wishes to pull this item from our consent calendar? I see nobody in room, no additional hands up via Zoom. I'll bring it back to the board. What's the will of the board?
Move approval.
Got a motion, is there a second? Got a second from Supervisor Church. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? Abstentions? The motion carries. With that, we will adjourn and call to order the Board of Supervisors of the Monterey County Water Resource Agency. We're, let the record reflect that all members are present except for Supervisor Alejo. With that, we do have one item on consent. Is there a member of the public who wishes to pull this item from consent? I see nobody coming forward in room, no additional hands up via Zoom. We will close public comment, bring it back. What's the will of the board?
Move approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Anybody opposed? The motion carries. With that, we'll adjourn and reconvene the Board of Supervisors on our agenda. Let the record once again reflect that all members of this board are present except for Supervisor Alejo. We have a consent calendar this morning consisting of items 16 through 27. Is there an item that any member of this board wishes to pull for additional comments, concerns or alternative action? Seeing none, we'll go to the public and see if there's a member of the public who wishes to remove an item from our consent calendar this morning. Seeing and hearing none, we will come back. What is the will of the board?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion from Church, a second from Ask You. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? The motion carries. With that, we'll jump into general public comment, an opportunity for the public to share comments regarding items not on today's agenda but within the purview of this body. We'll go to Zoom first. I think the name was Michaela.
Maica.
Maica.
Velazquez, but she took her hand down now.
Maica, this would be your opportunity to share your comments. So we're going to give you that opportunity first. All right. Your hand's not coming up and you're not muted, so I'm going to go to in-room. We'll go ahead and go to the dais.
Okay. Good morning, Supervisors. I'm Eloise Shim. And I just wanted to remind you that May is AAPI Month. I hope you're going to be recognizing that sometime soon. And also on in, at Pacific Grove, this Saturday, there's going to be the Walk of Remembrance starting at the Historical Society, the historical building there. And they walk to the Hopkins Building, which is about a mile or so along the rec trail, remembering the fishing village and the Chinese people in, that burned down in Pacific Grove. And I also wanted to mention that on May 11th, it is the anniversary of the building of the Transcontinental Railroad. And there were 12,000 Chinese workers who built the Transcontinental Railroad. And they weren't really recognized until 2019. And about 2,000 of them were killed because of very dangerous situations where they were working on the railroad. So yeah, that is, May 10th is also that, that anniversary. So thank you.
Thank you, Eloise. All right. I think we've got a hand back up on Zoom. So Maica, we'll go ahead and give you the floor.
Yes. Hi. My name is Maica Velazquez. I wanted to speak today based on something that my nephew has been enduring probably for the last year. He is special needs on the autism spectrum and considered severe. And what has happened, based on him being a client of the regional center, I can't lay all fault at the feet of the regional center because we've basically given them the responsibility of our special needs adults that are over the age of 24. But they are not fully staffed. They're actually very short-staffed. And then when it comes to complaints for things that aren't done for these individuals, we have the Office of Client Rights, which that office literally has three people in it. And so my nephew's mother has now filed two complaints and was in, pretty much is about to file her third, based on the fact that he has been kept out of programs for him, like day programs. And so the only thing that was open to him was a program all the way in Watsonville, which he could make it there in the morning in 45 minutes, but on the, on the transport home, he literally would sometimes take two and a half to three hours. And so we complained about that. And so now he again has no day program. So this is almost going on two periods together, totally in almost a year, where he was basically at home, depressed. It's affecting his health, his mom's mental health and her physical health. And the only issue, the only excuse that is given is that, well, you know, Monterey County is very limited in regards to programs, so we have to normally send people to San Jose, which for people like my nephew is unacceptable. So something needs to be done. The regional office needs, needs staffing or funding so they can hire more staff. The Okra Office definitely needs funding to hire more staff because that's who are
Thank you, Maica. We're at time. Thank you very much. We appreciate you sharing your comment today. All right. Any other hands up via Zoom? Seeing no other hands up, nobody coming forward in room, we're going to close general public comment and proceed forward to scheduled matters. We're going to begin with item 12 this morning, receiving a presentation from the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office and the DA's Office regarding Tobacco Retail License Statute and Ordinance Enforcement, as well as Department of Justice Grant Implementation. We're going to go to, I think it's Cristobal Orapesa? Not sure. There she is. All right. Team's coming forward. We've also got Ryan McGurk and a whole team.
Good morning, Chair Lopez, members of the board. My name is Elaine Narciso and I am a Program Supervisor with the Public Health Bureau. Here with me today are Armando Gonzalez, Consumer Protection Supervisor with Environmental Health, James Day, Sergeant with the County Sheriff's Office, and Ryan McGurk, Chief District Investigator with the District Attorney's Office. At the request of Supervisor Ask You, we are here to provide a joint update on the Tobacco Retail Licensing Program, TRL for short, here in Monterey County, as well as the alignment of the new Department of Justice Grants received by the Sheriff and District Attorney's Office and how the grants can support TRL program efforts. Next slide, please. During our presentation today, the topics we will discuss include an overview of the TRL program, an overview of the Department of Justice Grants, planned enforcement activities and next steps. Next slide, please. For context, on the screen is the timeline of when the various TRL ordinances throughout the county have been adopted, with the most recent ordinance being adopted by Delray Oaks last year. Of the 13 jurisdictions in the county, 11 have adopted their own tobacco retail licensing ordinance, with the two jurisdictions that have yet to adopt an ordinance being Greenfield and Sand City. Some quick updates, Public Health has reached out to the city of Greenfield, specifically to city officials, and requested to schedule a TRL presentation at an upcoming city council meeting. For Sand City, Public Health is planning on working with Monterey County Collaborates members to reach out to the Sand City Council. Two more updates, the city of Solidad has adopted their own tobacco retail licensing ordinance, but the city has decided to conduct their own enforcement. And then for the city of Salinas, they have confirmed that they will be working with the county to have the county conduct TRL enforcement of their ordinance. So this means that of the 11 jurisdictions that have adopted a TRL ordinance, the county is supporting with enforcement in 10 of these jurisdictions. Next slide, please.
Good morning, Supervisors. Armando Gonzalez, Monterey County Environmental Health Supervisor for our Consumer Protection Program. I'm going to provide an update on the overall TRL program. Who is responsible for overseeing and enforcing tobacco regulations? Currently, enforcement of tobacco laws under ordinance 5372 at the local level is handled by Monterey County's Environmental Health Bureau through the Tobacco Retail License, or TRL. Tobacco decoy programs would be the exemption which is enforced by Monterey County sheriffs. At the state level, California Department of Public Health, CDPH, provides regulations and guidelines that shape how we approach tobacco control. They ensure that all local efforts align with the standard, state standards and public health safety. Additionally, California Department of Tax and Fee Administration, CDTFA, oversees California cigarettes and tobacco products licensing act, which plays a critical role in regulating the sales and distribution of tobacco products throughout the state. Our mission here at the Environmental Health Bureau is to protect and serve consumers of Monterey County by ensuring that tobacco products do not reach underage youth. The Tobacco Retail Program not only enforces regulations, but also safeguards the health and community. Environmental Health Bureau approaches focuses on four key elements: education, inspections, enforcement and administration. During routine inspections, our inspectors provide educational training to tobacco retailers to ensure they are well-informed of the current regulations. For example, updates and education on ban of flavored tobacco and intoxicating hemp products, as these are the products most likely to be purchased by underage youth. During routine inspections, routine inspections are conducted to ensure compliance of these tobacco laws. These inspections focus on verification of current tobacco CDTFA licenses, local business license and our TRL program, I mean permit. Routine inspections are conducted once per year and additional complaint-based inspections may be conducted as needed to address the concerns of the community. Administrative citations may be issued for non-compliance during routine inspections. This administrates administrative fines and potential suspension or revocation of licenses. No suspensions or revocation of licenses have been issued by Environmental Health Bureau to date. Environmental Health works closely with public health to ensure up-to-date codes and regulations, accurate data and maintaining up-to-date records. In addition, we have been collaborating with the District Attorney's Office by providing them information on TRL facilities that have been continuously out of compliance. Here's a visual of our Stake Act sticker, which stands for Stake Act, sorry, Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement. This must be promptly displayed inside the facility. If a facility does not have one, one will be provided by our inspectors and noted down in our inspection report. As part of our ongoing efforts to ensure compliance with tobacco regulations, I'd like to provide an update on inspections conducted during current fiscal year 2425. We have 317 tobacco retailers under the program, 98 which are located in unincorporated Monterey County. The cost of a TRL health permit is $407, which equates to an estimated $129,000 in annual revenue. Currently, this revenue is 100% allocated to Environmental Health Bureau, which is used to maintain the program, conduct field inspections, as well as cover administrative costs. As of April of this, last month, all TRL facilities have been inspected for the current fiscal year 2425. Out of those 317 facilities inspected, 45 were marked out of compliance due to one or more tobacco violations. These violations include the sale of flavored tobacco, flavored hemp products and intoxicating hemp products. Administrative fine was issued to these violation violators. Environmental Health has provided the list of violating TRL facilities to the District Attorney Investigators for further review. No violations of selling to underage youth has been observed or noted by Environmental Health Bureau's inspectors. The tobacco products in violation must be removed from the shelf and taken out of the facility immediately. No products have been confiscated or seized by Environmental Health Bureau's inspectors. Confiscating of tobacco products falls under law enforcement authority. These California tobacco retailers may contact the distributor or wholesaler for whom they purchase the products and request a refund for any excess or unsold inventory flavored tobacco products that are prohibited for sale. These inspections are, and enforcement actions are crucial for maintaining compliance and ensuring the health and safety of our community, especially when it comes to restricting underage access to tobacco products. In January 2025, a joint letter from Monterey County Health and Monterey County Sheriff's Office was sent to all tobacco retailers to inform them of the ban of flavored tobacco and intoxicating hemp products throughout the state. Under Monterey County Health Code 7.8 and California Health and Safety Code 104559.5, these laws place the responsibility on the operator to ensure compliance. Products that must be removed from the shelves include the flavored tobacco, which, such as cigarettes, cigars and hookah, and intoxicating hemp products with the THC concentration of more than 0.3%. The letter states, "Any business failing to comply will be subject to fines, several penalties, potential criminal charges." To further to strengthen these efforts, AB 3218, Assembly Bill 3218, signed into law in September 2024, requires tobacco manufacturers to submit a comprehensive list of all products, including flavored products that they manufacture or import for sale in California. This enhances oversight and transparency, ensuring that the flavored tobacco products are properly reported to the Attorney General. This list is scheduled to be published on or before December 31st, 2025. Assembly Bill 45 was enacted to regulate all industrial hemp products that are sold and distributed in California, which include products intended for human consumption, dietary products or cosmetics. I believe Sheriff Commander Davis will now continue.
Good morning. My name is James Day. I'm Sergeant at the Sheriff's Office. This slide, just a overview of the decoy results from 1920 and 21. 2019, the Sheriff's Office had a Department of Justice, DOJ Enforcement Grant. And I actually ran the grant during that time period. So that's why the numbers are significantly less in 2021. I was not running it full-time on 2021. Next slide. This is just a, an overview of the, for the grant that starts July 1st, the current Sheriff's Office, DOJ Tobacco Grant. These are the, the points, to me, the requirements of the grant. I can go over each one of them if you wanted. 20 retailer inspections, those aren't necessarily done at the same time, Environmental Health. They'd be just a separate, random, randomly chosen, or if there's a problem that is brought to us by Environmental Health or any other agency. The 10 decoy operations that has to The 10 decoy operations that has to involve at least 20 retailers total, 10 shoulder tap operations, that's, if you're not aware, we'll have a juvenile ask someone outside of a business, if they'll go in and buy cigarettes for them, or vape, or other products. The undercover operations, that would be one of my deputies or detectives going in, trying to purchase flavored tobacco, not necessarily juvenile. 20 retailers visited, education, that would be going over past infractions, or educating on the new laws if we noticed any violations. And then 150 enforcement officer training, that's roll call training. And then, last slide. Grants takes, starts July 1st, so we'll, we're working on an MOU with the Health Department, and, and then identifying deputies that wish to be involved in these events, and training up the explorers who would likely be participating. That's all I got. Questions?
So one question, the roll call training.
Yep.
What is roll call training?
Oh, sorry. Roll call started the shift.
Okay, so.
So if shift starts at 7:00, the shift sergeant, the deputies or officers, depending on which jurisdiction you're at, will go over important stuff for the day, and then sent out to the field. So roll call training would be like a five-minute informative bit to teach officers or deputies a little more about tobacco.
Perfect, thank you. Wendy? Sorry.
There's more to present?
There's more to present. Any questions for the sheriff, though? Since I started? Okay, then we'll continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. On behalf of District Attorney Jenny Pacioni, I'd like to present some of the efforts that the District Attorney's Office has tried to make in stopping and curbing illegal tobacco, flavored tobacco sales within Monterey County in all districts throughout the county. We focus on education. The letter from the Health Department went out on January 6th to all the retailers that we then followed up with either undercover operations and/or tobacco retail license investigations, audits. Some of the applicable laws include Monterey County code sections, municipal code sections, health and safety for the flavored tobacco ban, and Monterey County single-use e-cigarettes. The consumer unit has felt that a broader approach to go after the business owners to stop the sales and stop the businesses where there's a negative competition because they are selling products that other businesses can't legally sell, and they're doing it behind closed doors or underneath the counter. These are sometimes national chains, they're positioned across the street from high schools, and they will sell to teens after teens tell them a special word to bring out a menu of flavored tobacco, or even adults. And again, this has happened in every district in this county. We have sent undercovers in who have successfully purchased some of these products at smoke shops, and again, national convenient chain, convenience store type businesses. So in doing this with whether asking or seeing something from behind the counter or underneath the counter, they have sold to our undercover investigators, and this is outside of the specific TRL grant. The funding that we're hoping to use for, from the TRL grant is for accounting and business practices to see how much is actually being made by these operations under the table undercover. Some of the collaboration which has to happen between the Sheriff's Department and the Health Department is deconflicting so that we're not all three going after the same business at the same time and showing up. So with communication, with these multi-agency inspections, we're focusing on some of the cases that are referred to us as habitual repeat offenders, or with community complaints, or high traffic from the Health Department, Environmental Health. So those cases are referred to us, and also our cannabis unit has seen a rapid increase in these cannabinoid hemp-like products that are being sold over the counter at non-cannabis retailers. Our investigations include gathering evidence, doing thorough inspections, seizing products, encouraging the operation, and exposing these violations, compliance with the state local laws to ensure the prosecution and removal of the products, and acting on tips from the public. We have seen with increase in teen tobacco use being up in 2024, at least 85% of it is flavored tobacco. So if we're hitting these flavored tobaccos that's illegal to be sold, again, at convenience stores and smoke shops, we're going to hopefully put a dent in the teen use of these flavored vapes. Some of the undercover businesses that we were able to successfully purchase illegal products from, from King City, Marina, Monterey, a number in Salinas, Seaside, Solidad, and Prundale. Many of these are still under active investigation, looking at actually how much some of these businesses are making and how they're selling. One of the operations actually occurred online with 70-plus percent of flavored tobacco sales going on online with only 1% requiring ID, which is required. So here are some of the next steps.
Lastly, we wanted to conclude by highlighting next steps in the program. The various agencies here are meeting to explore opportunities for enhancing outreach and education efforts while strengthening enforcement and reporting mechanisms. So through this collaborative effort, roles and responsibilities for each agency are being defined, and agreements between departments are being created as needed. As the, as these roles are finalized, TRL program fee studies will be conducted to assess the cost to implement the TRL program by each agency. Next slide, please. And that concludes our presentation. Thank you all so much for your time. We're open to any potential questions.
Thank you. Outside of a roll call training, we'll go down to you, Supervisor Askew.
Yeah, thank you. And I really appreciate the presentation and the sort of the team that we've got at this point now, working on this, because, you know, I know we've sort of had fits and starts and stops and starts with the ordinance, getting it up and running back in, or the request to get it up and running back, I think, 2009 or '10, and then we got an ordinance, and sort of been getting everyone lined up to move it forward, having the sheriff's office sort of take the lead, but then bringing it back to behavioral health, and then COVID hit, so we've sort of had alignments and misalignments. So having everyone now working together again, I think is, it's great to hear that we're paying attention again. So I guess we are collecting fees, we do have, we've worked really hard to get all of our cities, most of our cities on board with the ordinance. The county is the, our cities have asked the county to take on the responsibility for the administration of the ordinance. The environmental health is collecting the fees. In the past, we've done contracts out to, I think it was Sun Street Centers, if I recall, to do the youth decoys. I appreciate the sheriff's office now sort of in the space of maybe doing with the grant funding, doing the decoys. It's, I guess I'm unclear a little bit about the sheriff, having the deputies being the ones doing the, having the students come in, like that's really seemed like the most expensive approach to me from the, like, going back to the original intent of the ordinance, and from a cost-effective standpoint, we have some of our nonprofit partners who have youth, and if our goal really was to identify where, where we had violations occurring, and then elevating where those problems were to the next higher levels, is that still the strategy? Because I think if we have, I think one of the, one of the concerns was making sure that we're not just elevating the fee for the sake of elevating the fee. We want to have the cost burden fall on those, those businesses who are the violators. And so we have businesses who are good operators, and we have businesses who are violating the ordinance. So initially, when you, when we had, you know, enforcement occurring, the idea was education, and when we had lower cost, folks checking on businesses who don't have sign violations, who don't have any reason to have concerns, we don't need to have the cost incurred of having a sheriff deputy doing, you know, shoulder taps, or having a DA, you know, spend time doing forensic accounting. But what I'm hearing now is that the 20, you know, 20 visits per year, that we're going to immediately have sheriff deputies come into play for that. And so I guess I'm just, I'm unclear a little bit about how we're managing costs for the program, when the initial intent was to have it be the Health Department and some of our partner agencies, that's one question. Another question was on the slide, it showed that we only have three retailers participating in Marina. I know we have more retailers than that in Marina, so I was wondering if that was just bringing folks into the program? And then one other question, in terms of the District Attorney's comments about the flavored tobacco and pursuing some of the, some of the retailers who are selling flavored tobacco, at the point at which the District Attorney is pursuing retailers who are selling flavored tobacco, I'm assuming that their license has been revoked at this point. If they've been cited through the ordinance one, two, three times for being in violation, at some point, their license is revoked, right? So they're now no longer eligible to be, they've been cited, they've been fined, they've been educated, we've gone through the steps, they're now no longer eligible to be selling tobacco products in our region, if we're following the ordinance. So now they're outside of the ordinance, and that's now a legal issue separate from the ordinance. So just some clarifying questions from where I sit.
So as far as the sheriff's department and the decoy operations, the decoy operations, yes, they will have law enforcement supervising, but the sheriff's office explorers are unpaid. So there is not a cost in using the people that are actually doing those shoulder tapping or the decoy operations. But we are definitely open to working together, which I think we all plan on, and that's why we're, we're doing this presentation and being part of this group. And if there are certain places that need to be targeted, yes, we will definitely work on those, and not just randomly pick businesses that have been in compliance the entire time. So if that answers your question.
Yeah, I guess that just the cost of having, I mean, a sheriff deputy is probably one of the most expensive partners in this entire partnership. And so to have a sheriff be the one who's supervising a decoy operation, as opposed to having a nonprofit partner who's supervising a decoy operation of a youth purchasing, where we then identify, and we can cover more of our partner, more of our businesses, I think was the original idea where we could, you know, rather than just checking on 20 of our businesses a year, the idea was that we were checking on more of our businesses so that we could get a sense of, are we seeing a decrease in the number of businesses who are actually selling tobacco to minors on an annual basis at a cost that isn't so astronomical?
Well, for one, the 20 is just a number, a low ball of where we would like to start, and definitely as time permits and money permits, we would like to do more. As far as having law enforcement there, that's important because we're going to be the ones that are going to be citing them, and starting the criminal justice system by putting them into the DA's office, into their sphere. Because if you just have a random person who's not law enforcement, the DA's office, they're law enforcement as well, so when they're going out and they're doing these things, they're able to cite them and start the judicial process. But if it's the Health Department or somebody else without peace officer powers, yes, they can see the violations, but they're not able to take any type of enforcement action.
Right, but the tobacco retail license ordinance was written specifically so that it didn't require law enforcement to make a citation. I mean, that's how we wrote the ordinance originally, right, was so that it didn't require law enforcement to do a citation if someone was in violation.
So what is the purpose of law enforcement in this group?
I guess that's part of my question. I mean, I think there is a role for law enforcement to be involved at some point when there are, like, at the point when a, when a, when a, when there's violations of the law, and yes, there's violations of the law when, you know, the law's being violated, but, but getting the tobacco retail licensing ordinance so that we can track who is selling tobacco, and then pull those, or pull those licenses at the point when the education isn't working at the point in which, you know, ongoing violations of a retailer continuing to sell tobacco continues. And then, yeah, like, law enforcement needs to be getting involved at that point. But, you know, when we, when we put the ordinance in place, we didn't even have any way to know where was tobacco being sold in our county, and how do we begin to, to track that, to monitor it, to send people out, and to do the education that needed to happen, at a cost-effective way where we can track this information? So, so it's, I guess that's my question, right? Like, how do, where was the first step? The first step was getting an ordinance so that we can begin the work without having to have the higher-cost law enforcement, because we know how limited your time and resources are.
And I know with the DA's office, we focused on the habitual offenders, those that Environmental Health has already reached out to and notified and noticed and internally cited on a civilian level. So once it's gone past that, they continue to sell products and hide products behind closed doors or in a back room. That's when we do our inspection warrants and law enforcement's brought in, because it's, it's a habitual problem. And in multiple cases, we've had businesses shut down from Monterey to King City.
And that makes sense. I think at the point at which you're involved at that point, that makes sense, but at the, on the, at the beginning point, I think that the intention of the tobacco retail licensing ordinance was really to get on the front end of all of this, and so that's, questions aren't, unfortunately, I have to step away for a webinar that I'm hosting, so I will be stepping out. But really appreciate you being here, and I look forward to the ongoing engagement. I'm really pleased to have the partners who are participating, and look forward to seeing us get back up and running in all of the right ways with all the right partners.
All right, other supervisors?
Sure, it's always, always learn some new things here, besides roll call training and shoulder tap operations, and exactly what we're, so, but not being a smoker, I also learned through other things here too. So I wonder if I get a little clarification, and we talked about intoxicating hemp, because I thought that was the principle between hemp and cannabis, is it wasn't intoxicating, but as some understanding it, is I think it's, you know, I think as you mentioned, 0.3%, if it's less, if it's 0.3% or less, it's hemp, and if it's, isn't, is that considered above 0.3% cannabis? Or I thought that had to be higher than that? And I guess, I'm just trying to understand how big of a problem this really is, because I didn't, didn't realize hemp was being smoked, and I.
Any of the intoxicating hemp products that we sent out for testing far exceeded the hemp standard and the hemp percentage, and a number of the retailers that don't even sell or advertise hemp products are actually selling cannabis, vapable or inhalable cannabis, straight up, not marketed as hemp, just cannabis. And it's not at a cannabis retailer, it's at a smoke shop or convenience store.
Is that an increasing problem?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Because I, I mean, I think that's an important, important thing to really focus on, because we obviously have cannabis facilities who are under some financial pressure, let's just say, and I say that rather, rather low-key, they're under some pretty strong financial pressure, and they're under a lot more regulation, and, you know, these people are, and I assume this stuff is, this cannabis at these smoke shops, or it's a lot cheaper than they're buying perhaps at a, at an actual cannabis store, so I, you know, but I have a real concern with that, and I appreciate you, you know, you bringing that up and being aware of this. It is, and just kind of getting my understanding here then, if it goes above 0.3%, it's considered cannabis? Okay, so even if, and I assume the hemp, this intoxicating hemp, is being concentrated through some elaborate.
Well, it's not regulated, and it's, it's not overseen, so you don't know what product's actually going into it, it's not going through the cannabis and the trace programs. So it could be a mixture of either intoxicating or potentially harmful products.
So I, what I meant, I guess what I'm trying to get at is there is why, if some of them are selling cannabis, well, some are selling cannabis, but they, they can legally sell hemp in the facility as long as it's under 0.3, correct? And, and just to confirm, so, we don't know really the processes that are being done, but there's a lot of different process being done just to make that a higher percentage, but still sell it under the hemp label.
And intoxicating hemp?
And intoxicating, yeah.
Is, as it's advertised, and it's a very profitable cash business that's under the table. So for these smoke shops, for these convenience store retailers selling these illegal products, it's just profitable.
I don't know if you're able to give me any percentage, but when we do, we go in and, and do an operation onto these, what percentage are we finding selling hemp or cannabis?
We find that during our inspections that these retailers that are selling hemp We find that during our inspections that these retailers that are selling hemp or CBD products are smoke shops. That's, or smoke shops, liquor shops and maybe gas stations.
I guess.
Smaller percentage compared to other bigger retailers like CVS and Safeway, for example.
That's what I was wanting to know. Okay, thank you for that information.
So there are several loopholes in state legislation around hemp. And the part of the problem is the plant doesn't develop the THC, which is the intoxicating element, until pretty late in the process. And so it comes back to how we regulate cannabis and test even within the program. And when I say program, I'm talking about hemp and not just us, but others throughout the state. Because the volume and ability to plant massive rows of hemp that then gets hot and goes over the amount often intentionally and then is harvested, extracted or, right, marketed for different purposes through gray channels, black channels is part of the challenge. And there are several pieces of legislation moving this year to try to close some of those loopholes in the hemp space. Because that is one of those critical elements in terms of how these folks put it up on the shelf and pretend it's something else, or at least initiate the conversation, right, about where the other products may be resting within the facility. So we're well aware and there's different pieces moving this year to try to close some of those loopholes. But I do see Michelle standing in the back and want to see, based on this conversation, is there anything else you want to share at this time, Michelle? Sure, come forward.
Hi, good afternoon yet. So Michelle House, Cannabis Program Manager, thank you. The one thing I just want to add, and thank you for the idea that we're growing hemp under the farm bill and it's supposed to be used for other things. So one of the other things to keep in mind is hemp then is also can be cooked, shall we say, like when you say made hot. Also by changing the chemical compounds, so by changing it by heating it up and transforming it. Just like how we do with cannabis flower, right? We're transforming it, putting it into vape pens. So then it's put into vape pens that are then used as, as we said, they'll call it hemp or CBD. And as you stated, anything above the 0.03, then it moves from being hemp to being like cannabis. But these are not legal products that we would put into our dispensaries. As you said, these are competitive products, then are sold, they're not being taxed, they're much cheaper and they can be on the market for anyone, including our youth. Thank you.
Supervisor Daniels?
Thank you. I just have a couple of questions just because I wasn't here and I'm just trying to understand the timeline. So our original ordinance was in 2012 that we're referring to. And in reference to Supervisor Askew's comments, that was an ordinance that was drafted prior, obviously, to state legislation. And you reference in this presentation, two pieces of state legislation. And I'm not on the page right now, but there was A, B, well, you've got them, I don't need to remember them. But those were pieces of legislation from last year, is that accurate or was it from future years?
Assembly Bill 45 is 2021.
Okay.
And the other one I mentioned, I do not have the date, oh, effective January 1st, 2025.
2025, so the letter then that was sent to all of the retailers was in 2025, referencing not only the ordinance, but the new legislation and requirements.
Correct, we wanted to get ahead of the law coming into, coming into law. So we wrote the letter and sent it out.
Okay.
To inform the.
I'm just trying to understand how the Sheriff's Department wouldn't be engaged because the letter is indicating that there is a law on the books that needs to be complied with. So I'm just trying to understand what this board's intent was prior not having the law enforcement involvement in the ordinance. I'm just looking for some clarity.
Do you have a microphone on there? Sorry.
With the January 6th letter for flavored tobacco, the industry changed from 2012 when flavored tobacco, vaping hemp, intoxicating hemp and cannabis, all of these products were not necessarily on the market. The online sales of tobacco to minors was not as prevalent in flavored tobacco. But with legislation, the flavored tobacco ban allowed law enforcement to step in at a much, with a heavier hand and firmer law enforcement and legislation to stop it and put a stop to these vendors and retailers.
Okay, so the second question I have is we did get some public comment about funding. And we got the presentation about the grants. This is all very exciting stuff and it sounds like stuff we would all support. But is there a mechanism in terms of some of the, well, I guess I could also wait till public comment is over and see if we hear. But is there, is there a mechanism for, you know, increasing our support of these operations to ensure that we are as effective as possible? So that's just something I'll put out there, maybe we'll wait till the public comment is over. And if there's a discussion to be had, we could engage in.
I know from the grant funding, there's no deputy positions funded, there's no attorney or investigator positions funded with the grant funds. So the actual enforcement's all collateral and falls on our civil attorneys out of a general fund. It's not, it's not funded necessarily.
Historically, I think the conversation went that there didn't need to be somebody from the Sheriff's Department, right? It was, I didn't see it as exclusionary. It was more of, can we write it in a way so that the enforcement capability can rest within other departments, right? Just in case we were stretched on staff. I didn't see it as exclusionary, saying they shouldn't be part of the process and conversation and enforcement. It was more, should resources be limited? We wanted to empower staff to the extent that we could to execute anything they needed to do in order to get to the bottom of this and, for lack of a better term, extract these facilities of sale and sales points from our community.
Right, that makes perfect sense. So then the second part of my question will be about the fee and whether or not there's a conversation to be had.
Then at this point, let's go to the public, see if we have any public input on this presentation. I see Kendra Howell coming forward, so we'll go ahead and give you the floor, Kendra.
Hi, thank you so much, members of the board. My name is Kendra Howell. I'm with Salinas Valley Health, Blue Zones Project, and also proud to be a co-chair of Monterey County Collaborates. Since 2019, Blue Zones Project has aligned with the efforts to ensure tobacco retail licensing ordinances are enacted throughout the county. We're proud to support the Monterey County Health Department and the Collaborates Committee in this work. However, despite regulations, the tobacco industry and many retailers, retailers, as we've heard this morning, will continue to find ways to ensure their products can be sold and especially sold to youth. And with the repeal of oversight at a federal level, we fear that these efforts will become bolder. It is up to local leaders, all of us, to ensure these efforts are held in check. We're grateful that the Board of Supervisors has recognized the harm tobacco use causes our community and supported TRLO's efforts to address this harm. Your past support has been invaluable. This last hurdle in protecting our local youth from this predatory industry and ensuring a healthy future for our community is to ensure that these TRLO policies are adequately enforced. Thank you to the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office and the District Attorney's Office in actively promoting the importance of TRLOs, the need to resume youth decoy operations and the necessity for robust enforcement. We look forward to continuing our support of these efforts with these fantastic partners and thank you all for your commitment.
Thank you, Kendra. Anybody else in room? All right.
Hello, my name is Jaclyn Cheves. I'm the Director of Policy and Partnerships with the National Blue Zones Team. And I actually flew in here from LAX just to hear this today. So part of the certification process for Monterey County and the Blue Zones Project is going around and seeing the built environment changes, food environments, as well as tobacco and alcohol access and other substances. So I just want to say thank you so much. This issue is not just in California, but nationwide. I just visited Pennsylvania, New Jersey, which has the same problems with intoxicating hemp, with flavored tobacco. Fortunately, our state has protections and so now we have some enforcement teeth. And other cities and communities, dozens across California in Blue Zones are asking, what do we do? And enforcement agencies do not know where to start. And so thank you for having this model and for working together. This collaboration is just really exciting to see. Tonight, actually, in my hometown, flavored tobacco is so out of control that they are considering a moratorium on smoke shops because it is everywhere. And same thing, the teens come in, say a certain word, they can get things that are not just tobacco. So thank you again for your support and we appreciate you.
Thank you. Anybody else in room?
Good afternoon, almost. I'm Dale Hillard, actually one of the reasons why this item's on the agenda. In 2005, I read that article and the rest is pretty much in my letter to you. I think one of the things that I'd like to comment on is that fee. Because I put in here, the fee is 16% of, enforcement is 16% of the fee. You guys can determine the fee, whatever it may be. And I just picked up in one of the presentations that the 16%, that's how I got that particular number. Doesn't, it's flexible and it can be whatever, pretty much you decide, you know, what you want it to be. I guess after hearing the presentations, one of the things that confuses me, we kind of finally have now, well, I basically worked with the Health Department, but now we have environmental health, we have sheriff, we've got the DA. And it seems to me, what I've heard today is they ignore the ordinance. They only act based on state law, which is kind of discouraging to me because I've made presentations to many city councils indicating that we will police our own without a grant. And it seems like that's the only time we do anything is when we get a grant and then we do something. Because the fee doesn't, you know, fee seems to have gone to education and not to do decoys. And so I'm a little bit discouraged with hearing that. And that's why I kind of came with the idea of, we need to increase this fee so we don't have to rely on grants. So in conclusion, I'd like to request that the Board of Supervisors raise the TRLO fee to a level that allows the ordinance to be self-sustaining.
Thank you, Mr. Hillard.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else in room? Seeing nobody in room, we're going to go to Zoom.
Anne Wheelis?
Ms. Wheelis? Anne?
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Anne Wheelis. I'm a resident of Pacific Grove, a retired Health Department health educator, a member of the Monterey County Collaborates, the Tobacco Control Coalition. And I speak to you with a perspective of working in tobacco use prevention for over 30 years. I want to emphasize how much I appreciate the presentation that I learned a lot from the presentation today. I want to emphasize the importance of local regular enforcement activities regarding the illegal sales of tobacco products and hemp and all those other products now. In the early 1990s, the Health Department worked with Stanford University to study the effect of reducing the sale of tobacco to minors in the study committees, which were the four unincorporated cities of South County, which were much smaller at that time than they are now, I do acknowledge that. What we found is that illegal sales, as measured by decoy operations, were reduced in the two communities that received regular merchant education and recognition of their compliance. And we also saw reduction of tobacco use by minors in those communities. In the years after the study ended, when there was no funding for that kind of activity, it was observed that without ongoing education and enforcement, sales to minors went up as measured by the state and federal decoy operations, which did take place. I want to applaud the County Sheriff's Department and District Attorney's Office for their successful applications for DOJ funding to conduct local education and enforcement activities. And I want to encourage the collaboration between the departments, but also between and with the local nonprofit organizations that have been doing this kind of education throughout the community for the last several years. It's good that those long years of educational and advocacy activities.
Thank you, Ms. Wheelis, we're at time, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other hands up? Seeing no other hands up on Zoom, we're going to close public comment and bring it back to the board. Supervisor Daniels, I know you had some additional comments based on the fee question.
Yeah, and again, I feel like I'm coming in, I want to appreciate everybody who gave this presentation and I'm glad that there is so much activity around this, whether it's from the ordinance, the grant, whatnot. And, you know, reflecting here on, you know, my own youth and the impact that Joe Camel made on my youth. And I was a youth smoker, but there's something really deceptive about, you know, what's happening with flavored tobacco and the fact that you can walk into one of these retailers with a secret code word and get, you know, this type cannabis essentially. And so I am just, you know, again, new to this, but really open to, you know, entertaining what some of the public commentators made, one in particular of, you know, how do we increase both the education and decoy operations, right? So what can we do? And I don't really want to leave this presentation without, you know, a commitment or something that we could take to heart what we heard today, supporting everything that's happening right now, but also, you know, is there a greater percentage of the fee that needs to go to this? Or is there, you know, an investigation of raising the fee? And if I understand, I mean, the fee is on the sale of tobacco products, right? Like it's not, it's, this is, this would be appropriate, I would think. So it looks like someone's here to say something about this. But I just, my comment would be, if there's another step for us to take after today's meeting, I would be willing to engage in that step, thank you.
Director Menace?
Thank you, yes, through the chair. Thank you, Dale. I used to work with Dale. Tobacco was one of the areas that I first started when I started at the Health Department. And I do apologize to the public that we, as the county, have not been holding up our end of the deal with the ordinance. And I'm not going to get into the details of why that is. But we are at a point right now where I think that we've pretty much centralized everything in our Environmental Health Bureau of the Health Department. It's great that the sheriff and the district attorney have been able to leverage some state funding to help augment and complement some of the work. And so we are right now trying to figure out how do we move forward? Not only what's required under state law, what's required under their grant funds, but also in our ordinance. And we are trying to kind of rebuild that model program so that we can go back and evaluate, what is the fee that should be brought to you for your consideration and approval? The $300 and some dollars that we've been charging, we've been charging since day one. Beginning, it was just us and the city of Salinas. The city of Salinas was going to be doing their own enforcement. Everything's kind of come full circle where now all, most of the jurisdictions have a TRL ordinance and they're really asking the county through its Health Department, Environmental Health Bureau, to really be the lead on that. So I'm glad that we're back out in the community, we're educating. I think, you know, although we are regulators, we do lead with education. We believe that if you provide people the information that they need, that they will do the right thing. And if they don't do the right thing, we do need to lean on our law enforcement officials to help us make sure that a citation that we maybe, may issue has further teeth and we can move it through, down the process of fines, of revoking their license, et cetera. So we do need our law enforcement agencies to be part of that process. So I think I'm looking at the team here that is kind of leading this effort, give us maybe six months to come back with an update in terms of where we are and what our plans are to go forward to fully implement the ordinances for all of our jurisdictions that have asked us to do that for them.
Six months, okay? Okay.
I think in terms of direction, I would, supportive of seeing some additional funding, but also just teeth, meaning a violation should quickly constitute losing your license, right? And the ability to reapply for one in the future. And so something like that being at step one or two, I would appreciate even more so given the nature of what is being sold. I think the issue of what we're seeing isn't just tobacco anymore, as we heard. And so the enforcement has to step up to meet that in order to really meet the expectations of our community. Other thoughts?
Just want to say again, thank you so much. And my comments, I think, I didn't want to come across too harsh, but I just don't, like, we want to see some urgency and I appreciate the work that everyone is doing. I appreciate the partners that we've got at the table. I know we've got folks that have been working on this and pushing on this for over a decade. And we just want to see it, I want to see it proceed. I want to see, I want to see the cities that we've fought so hard to bring on board, I want to see us delivering for them. You know, we've been laying hard on our city councils to bring them to join the county in the tobacco retail license ordinance, and then we bring them on board, and they come back to me and say, well, what's happening? And so, I want to be able to go back to them and say, this is what is happening, and make sure that we're delivering with the most cost-effective ways of protecting our kids from purchasing these products. So, yes, but thank you all, really appreciate all the work.
Right, six months from now puts us in early November, so hopefully, we can get this done ahead of our holiday breaks there, and look forward to having a report come back then. Any final thoughts from the DIAS?
Just in agreement with my colleagues on here, too, and, you know, again, I look at this, you know, on this hemp cannabis issue, too, as, we need stronger enforcement, because we do have a whole industry that we're regulating, and it's following rules. And this is a loophole, or I wouldn't even say it's a loophole, it's an illegal action that's going through, that is undercutting that, and, you know, I'm in favor of this coming back, and just having, whatever we can do to have a stronger role. So, thank you for the presentation.
All right, with that, we've given direction, we'll consider this item received. I don't think we need any additional action, is that right? Armando, Ryan? All right, and we'll consider this item concluded. Thank you very much.
Can I add a quick comment?
Sure.
I just wanted to circle back to a question you brought up, Supervisor Askew. So, there are currently 16 retailers in the City of Marina, so they were onboarding, onboarded to the TRL program in fiscal year 2425. So, the numbers that we pulled at that time, three of the retailers had paid, but there's actually 16. Okay, thank you.
All right, then with that-
One comment, I know with two of the retailers in King City, in Monterey, and Prundale, too, injunction of relief was required, civil action was required, because outside of their license being pulled, they still continued to sell behind closed doors, and required law enforcement to step in, DA investigators undercover to step in with inspection resources to actually shut down the business, which took a tremendous amount of attorney work on the injunction and civil action enforcement work that couldn't have been done by a civil partner resource.
We appreciate that. Thank you, Ryan. All right, with that, we're gonna skip over other board matters, I'm not, sorry, not other board matters, our referral matrix, since we have no referrals, and jump to our CAO's administrator comments.
We do want to recognize the Water Resources Agency's accomplishments for 2024. For the first time in 30 years, the agency revamped its 20th century groundwater monitoring activities to meet 21st century regulatory requirements. They're working closely with Salinas Valley Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency, and the two entities spent a year meeting with the Salinas Valley Groundwater Stakeholders to receive input on how to modernize and expand the historical groundwater monitoring efforts. This resulted in the rescission of three 1990s ordinances and the adoption of a new ordinance, a first-ever program manual, and a regulatory fee by the agency's Board of Supervisors on October 1st, 2024. The new groundwater monitoring program will inform future planning and management decisions. In addition to that, in May 2024, the agency signed a $16 million funding agreement with California Department of Water Resources to advance the agency's dam safety projects. Chief among these is the state mandated replacement of the San Antonio Dam spillway. The agency completed an alternatives analysis and submitted to the Department of Water Resources Division of Safety and Dams for review in December 2024. The Division of Safety and of Dams Review approved the agency's proposed spillway replacement alternative and extended the deadline for replacement to December 2031. In addition, due to plentiful rainfall during '23 and '24, the agency was able to support the record-breaking 2024 water delivery season at the Salinas Valley diversion facility to the Casterville Seawater Intrusion Project. And lastly, in 2024, was also an important planning year for the agency, with the number of studies initiated and for release in 2025. Among those are the Groundwater Monitoring Program Regulatory Fee Study, an update to the agency's 1998 Historical Benefits Analysis, to now include assets constructed after the HBA's initial release, which is the Historical Benefit Analysis, original release, a draft engineer's report for the Interlake Tunnel project, and continuing progress on the development of the agency's Salinas River Operations Habitat Conservation Plan. And the Water Resources Agency is led by Ara, and his team are doing extraordinary work behind the scenes, so today, we just wanted to highlight the great work. Thank you.
Great job, Ara, Darian, and your team, you guys are doing a bang-up job. And with that, we'll, nobody's making eye contact, you guys know what's coming. We'll go to board comments, and I'm gonna start on my right, Supervisor Askew.
Ready. Let's see here. So, it is graduation season, and I wanted to congratulate the class of 2025. My Chief of Staff, Yuri Anderson, in her capacity as Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Monterey Peninsula Community College District, attended the MPC's Trio Graduation Ceremonies on Friday. My Policy Analyst, Eric Moore, was at CSUMB's Rainbow Affinity Graduation, celebrating accomplishments of our LGBTQ plus CSUMB students. Had a great time at the birth fair with Parenting Connection and all of our folks from the Birth and Family Fair Partners on Sunday in Salinas. Also had a chance to hang out with folks from the Vietnamese Buddhist Association in Monterey County, along with other Vietnamese communities from Northern California and Marina, at the Udam Temple, celebrating Buddha's birthday. A lot of fun, great food, like, so much great food, so, so much great food. And, yeah, just a couple of quick announcements, thank you.
All right, Supervisor Daniels?
Sure thing. I, if you remember, had to leave early, two board meetings ago, and then missed, I left early and then missed last week, so I didn't get to say that I did go to the CSAC Legislative Conference. That was really informative. And, you know, what I will bring up about that is the book that was produced by CSAC called Meeting the Mandate, would be very valuable, I think, for folks to read, whether it's groundwater sustainability, whether it is the housing element, really interesting production that they put together to understand how we are meeting the legislation that comes down the pipeline. I also had the opportunity last week to go to Irvine as your representative on 3CE. I went to my very first meeting, I think it was in February, and realized I knew nothing about energy markets and renewable technologies and all the things that you really do need to understand to be an effective board member on that, on 3CE. So, it was really exciting. I learned a lot, and got my first report back from our CEO, and it was fascinating to truly understand what he was talking about. So, I look forward to continuing to represent this board on 3CE, and for all the members of the community out there that have questions about our Community Choice Aggregate and your energy bill, and how we are working toward a carbon-free future, please reach out to my office, and we can help you understand that section of your PG&E utility bill and what we're doing. In addition to that, let's see, continuing to go to all the meetings that I sit on boards for this board, but I did get to go to the Big Sur International Marathon, huge success. Simon Ritchie was, I remember, the winner, the male winner, I can't remember the name of the female winner, but I noted that he wore the exact same outfit this year as he wore last year, perhaps for good luck, but it was the same old brown t-shirt, and it was really fun to see. I also got to go to the Good Old Days Festival this weekend, last weekend, and participate in the parade, which was my first time doing that as supervisor, and it was really fun. I enjoyed being in PG for that event. And the last meeting I'll report out on was, I did my first, it was my first time as Chair of the Big Sur Multi-Agency Advisory Council Meeting last Friday. And that, if anyone doesn't know about Bismac, we bring together the Congressman's Office, we bring together Assemblymember State, United States Forest Service, NOAA, the National Marine Sanctuary, and many Big Sur residents and representatives from the community and state parks, et cetera. And we have a meeting at four times a year to really implement governance for Big Sur, since the choice was made many years ago not to federalize. And so, instead, this is self-governance, and it's a really important meeting for the community, and it's a challenge to be the Chair, and I think I did a good job. So, we got through that. The last thing I will say is, if you haven't heard, Porsche is the new official car of the WeatherTech Raceway Laguna Seca, and that's really exciting news, and happy to share as your new representative from this board on the Friends of Laguna Seca Board.
Congrats. You got there and made immediate progress, look at that. What else can we assign you to? We'll go to Supervisor Church.
Happy post Cinco de Mayo, and we had a town hall in Creek Bridge last week, which went very well with a good turnout. It's actually a very, very good discussion. Just pointing out, there are improvements taking place in the community of Pajaro, finally, and sidewalks, street lights, a lot more to come, side street paving, and of course, there's the Porter House, and it's gonna be ongoing for the next couple of years, and it's really a very positive step. Also want to point out, the Aromas Country Garden Tour on Saturday, between 10 and 4, it's a great fundraiser hosted by the Aromas Hills artisans. Self-guided tour starts at the Aromas Grange, and chance to tour local home gardens and see artists at work in their gardens. There's also the Hootenanny at Rancho Cielo on Saturday, raising money for the nonprofit Hope Horses and Kids, 4 to 10 p.m., silent live auctions, dinner, high music, and dancing. And finally, this Sunday is Mother's Day, so be kind to your mother, because you only have one.
Picking up where you left off, Saturday is Mexican Mother's Day. It's always the 10th, so just want to call that out, and looking forward to celebrating with my family. I'll also be joining the Arroyo Seco Citizens Association as they do their annual duck race up in Arroyo Seco this Saturday, it'll be at the Quello Ranch. Yes, they have to recover every duck, they release down river, it's an adventure. There's actually a competition by colleges, including Stanford, UCSE, with motorized ducks, and then there's the fundraiser, which is, you can buy ducks, add them to the pile, and as they move down river, the winning duck gets a great prize. So, want to welcome folks out to join us this Saturday up at Arroyo Seco. I also want to call out that last, end of last week, I had the opportunity to work with RAI, the Rural Advancement Institute, to bring in a group of visitors, and we stayed in the 5th, and we spent time at TNA in the 3rd, and then we went to the 4th, where we checked out Joby, where we were met by Lane Long, a council member, before heading to dinner at Rancho Cielo in District 2. So, everybody got a little love, except for Louis, so glad he's not here this week, so he can't yell at me. But in that, we had the California Director of the EPA, Yana Garcia, as well as Board of Equalization Member, Anthony Vasquez, and seven Chiefs of Staff from Sacramento, here to learn about the issues, that, what, the positive things happening within Monterey County, lessons they can take back, as well as some of the challenges that we're facing. And so, it was a great opportunity to have those folks here and share a little bit about the rural challenges, the challenges rural California is facing. I want to thank those folks for taking the time to visit. We also had a Deputy Director from Fiona Ma's office with us that day. A lot of, a lot of folks, a lot of good folks coming out to learn about rural California. So, want to thank RAI for choosing us as a destination, and thank all of our partners who came out and were willing to spend time with us to learn. I also want to call out that I'll be leaving late tonight for DC, where I'll be meeting with, again, our RCRC partners to meet with the administration. We've got a series of about 14 meetings set up over the next three days. We'll see if I'm allowed into the White House, we'll see how this goes. It'll be an interesting one, but I do also want to thank the Grower Shipper Foundation for putting on their annual Ag Woman of the Year. Last week, I was able to slide out a little early from the RAI tour and make it to that presentation to present Jessica Harris with the resolution that we passed, right, without yet releasing who it was. It's always a surprise, she's a presenter, so she was standing up there presenting when she saw her family step out from behind a curtain, and the emotions started running. She's known for her hugs, so it was very special to be there and be able to grab one of her hugs and thank her for all that she's done for the industry and for us in Monterey County. As we head into the weekend, I also wanted to call out Mother's Day, and just thank my wife, Huzming, for all that she puts up with, and my mother for having created me. She is a very special woman who taught me that when life throws crap at you, you can plant a rose garden and use that manure to create something beautiful. That was what she always told me during high school, and I've held on to that lesson. And so, Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers in Monterey County for all that you do and all that you put up with, and all of us stubborn little boogers. And with that, I'm gonna turn to County Council to see if we have anything to report at a closed session.
No reportable action.
With that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.